Is it all right? Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Town of Dayton Board of Selectmen's regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 14th, 2024 at 6 o'clock PM. And I want to apologize for everybody who had Valentine's plans that had to be here. It's a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person at Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue. Today's meeting ID number is 854-2474-6564. The pass code to join the meeting is 896-361.
Recording in progress.
Sorry, it's okay. And the phone number is 305-224-1968. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of the matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Now, all items listed in fact may be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to extent permitted by law. Call of input may be provided using the following methods. Contact our office at boardofselectmen@dighton-ma.gov to provide input prior to the meeting, or via Zoom slash call, and by phone at 305-224-1968. This continually played on Channel 9, Dayton Channel 9, and at YouTube at www.youtube.com/townofdighton. Call to order, please.
Good evening. Leonard Hall is present.
Nicole Mello, present.
And Peter Cameron, present. We have already done executive session, so you guys don't have to worry about that. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in love, indivisible, limited in justice to all.
There isn't a moment of silence tonight, so we're going to go right into Police Chief George. We're going to do this and then move around. So, George. Oh, hi, George.
Hi.
Good evening, George.
All right. This evening, I would like to appoint a gentleman named George Vernal. George was highly recommended to me by his current, well, just retired Deputy Chief from Rockland PD, as well as some other neighboring departments that called over, recommending George, as he's been looking for a closer place to pursue his career as a police officer. George currently resides in Taunton. He's a successful business owner in the city of Taunton. He's here with his wife and children tonight and grand son, right? George fits the, definitely fits the department very well. I had him in a couple of weeks ago, met a few of the guys, gave him a quick tour of the station. He's fluent in Spanish, right? So I think he brings some good qualities to the town. He's been working in Rockland since 2017 as a reserve, but we're a little bit more active here as far as us using our reserves for road duty and whatnot as far as compared to Rockland, where it's more auxiliary-based, where he rides around with another auxiliary. So I think he gets some more use over here. He's up to date as far as certifications go now. He's trying to finish his bridge program, which he'll just need his hours, which here in this town, hopefully, we can oblige that.
Great. This is a great news. Thank you for wanting to do this. We're glad to have you aboard.
Thank you, sir.
So we need to appoint George Vernal as a part-time reserve officer. Is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint George Louise Vernal as a part-time reserve officer on the Dayton Police Department.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Congratulations, George. You're on board.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. I appreciate it. Please say good night.
I don't know if it was a good ask. Oh, I love that place. Okay.
That's it. We're going to move things around, but you can have a seat for now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out.
We're going to review, discuss, and act appointment of Britt Russ to the Cemetery Commission. Britt, you want to join the Cemetery Commission?
Sure.
Sure, why not? Britt obviously wants to join, and I see no reason why she shouldn't. Mark Pacheco is the Chairman of the Cemetery Commission, and he recommends her, or highly recommends her. So is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Britt Greelis Russ to the Cemetery Commission.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Congratulations, Britt. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's it?
That's it.
All this?
Aye.
We're going to move things around this evening so that both Chiefs don't have to stay here for this, tonight's, I was going to say performance, but...
I hope you prepared, Kevin.
Kevin, you don't mind, do you?
Not at all.
Okay, great. So we're going to move right over to new business. So I need a motion to take things out of order.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the order, the agenda order, and take new business item A at this time. Review, discuss, and act.
Okay, we're going to review, discuss, and act propose remaining project memo for the Bristol County Opera closeout plan. Mike?
Yes. So, like, so, way back in 2021, when the opera program, when the opera program began, you will remember that original allotment through the county of Bristol was approximately $1.3 million. We expended, we expended about $270,000 for, like, for our public safety radio communication project. We also, at the beginning of last, at the beginning of last month, applied for $409,000 for sewer upgrades. Like, at this point, we're proposing tonight a plan for the remaining $699,000. Like, it is very important to note that all but one of the projects before you tonight have also been vetted, have also been vetted by Capital Outlay as well, which is important. So we have actually, like, we, like, we, we, like, we have actually a total of four projects we're proposing. Like, while first, we have the replacement of Dayton Fire Department, we have the replacement of Dayton Fire Department self-contained breathing apparatus, personal protective equipment at, with a cost of, with a cost of $371,292. Like, we, like, we, we have the upgraded replacement of Dayton Police Department Witness Interview Room and lockup camera and audio archiver and the video storage system with an amount of $23,946,000. Like, we, like, we, like, we, we, like, we have the planned Main Street, like, we, like, we have the planned Main Street drainage upgrades at an amount, at an amount, at an amount of $260,224.98. Like, and then we have, like, and then we, like, and then, and then we have proposed cost for MS4, MS4 Permit Compliance Services for stormwater, like, in an amount, in an amount of $43,800. And, I, oh, 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 like, as I mentioned, all these projects have been vetted. Oh, they, oh, like, oh, oh, like, they, 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 they are very, very, very critical. Oh, 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 like, oh, like, oh, like, oh, like, oh, like, it, oh, like, it, oh, like, it, a variety, oh, yeah, like, operations in town. We have the Chiefs here to talk about them as well. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, oh, yeah, and I'm happy to, oh, yeah, and happy to answer questions or concerns.
Sure, thank you.
Yep.
Can we start off with the fire department? Chief, you ready?
Yeah.
Sure. The self-contained breathing apparatus, do we have anything like it now?
Yes.
And it's outdated, I guess?
Yes.
How bad?
So the breathing apparatus we currently have in service is 15 years old.
Wow.
By NFPA standards, that's the life of an SCBA, which is why it's before you tonight. Mike and I attempted last year to get an AFG grant, which is Assistance in Firefighters' Grant, for the same amount, and it was turned down or denied. And unfortunately, we don't even get a denial letter or a response as to why it was denied. So it, it, we attempted. Right now, the concern is, is that these current SCBAs are, for lack of a better term, nickel and diming us to death. There's pots and pieces that are falling apart, that we have to constantly send them out. So we're down an SCBA, like, currently, right now, there's one going out for service. That's, so we're down one SCBA, which means we're down one person if we have a structure fire.
Okay.
The bottles have a 15-year lifespan also, so November 1st, we lost 48 SCBA bottles, which means all those basically get disposed of because they can no longer be hydro-tested. So over the years, we've been slowly purchasing 10 SCBA bottles a year to offset that loss, know it was coming, and not knowing what would happen with the purchase of the replacements, just so we continue to have SCBA bottles. So these are, this is our lifeline.
Yeah.
In a fire. So it's supercritical that we get these replaced and up to date with where we should be for the personnel safety on scene.
Sure. I assume that's, the bottles are the related equipment?
Yeah, so the bottles are part of the related equipment. Part of it, too, is RIT packs, which is rapid intervention. So if we have a down firefighter, or basically a down firefighter, we take a pack in and we can put this person on this pack to extricate them from a building if they're...
Sure. And how many do we have, or are we going to buy?
So that this will buy, replace all 31 SCBAs we have in the department.
Okay.
To fully outfit every apparatus that we have.
Great.
And it will be two RIT packs, one for each of our first-out engines. So Station 1 has a first-out truck that would arrive on scene first, and Station 2 has the same thing. This will replace RIT packs in both of those.
Another 15 years out of these?
Another 15 years out of these, correct.
And about maintaining them, what happens?
So that all the SCBAs have to be flow-tested annually, so that gets done annually, no matter what, what age they are, just to make sure the operation is correct.
Okay. If they get used, they can get replenished?
So part of what the cost is also is a new filling station. The current filling station and compressor that we have at Station 2 is a hand-me-down, bits and pieces. The compressor was from 19, I think I figured, 82, that we're currently operating with. The filling station that it's in was a gift we got from Plainville, Massachusetts, when they were getting rid of theirs because they upgraded. And that was probably, that was probably 20 years ago.
Wow.
15, 20 years ago when we got that donated from them. So it's all just really outdated.
Yeah.
It needs to be, we're at a point where everything just needs to be upgraded.
Sure.
And I hate to say that, but unfortunately, that's where we are.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Hall, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Well, actually, I do to Mr. Mullin. But the opera proposal, was it reviewed by Capital Outlay?
Yes.
And they are in total support of this?
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mel, any questions?
No, other than I think that it speaks well of how well the fire department takes care of their equipment, that you had it for the 15 years, that it's still operational and that.
Thank you.
So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I don't think there's any further questions. We'll vote on these individually, Mike?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Individually, or can we do them all together?
Either way, like, the board wants.
We can do it all together then.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Utilizing the town's remaining $699,262.98 of opera money, I would like to make a motion to approve the replacement of Dayton Fire Department self-containing breathing apparatus, personal protective equipment, and related equipment for $371,292. In addition, an upgrade and replacement of Dayton Police Department Witness Interview Room and Lockup Camera and Audio Archiver and Video Storage System at the sum of $23,946.
Actually, before you continue, I don't mean to interrupt you, but can we hear from the Chief first before we...
No.
And then we can continue. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do that to you.
All right. Good evening again. All right. So this, this came to us a short time ago when we're having issues with the, the system recording. So we actually had the company that came in, Gentec, a while ago to evaluate the system after we had lost the power issues, and discovered that we're having issues with the recording devices and the camera system itself. So I'm just going to read from this here. The, yeah, the project seeks to replace the, to upgrade the camera system and the recording devices and the witness, witness interview rooms as long as, as well as the lockup area, the video storage, and also updating the current software that's in, that's, that's running the service right now. This also will bring us up to par with the, the annual upgrades as far as upgrading the software to maintain the system so we don't run into these issues again. There were some heads that were different when the initial install went in that no one told us about. So when they came in to evaluate the whole thing, there was five heads that were different. They said, "By upgrading this, we'll put everything the same, so everything's operational, and there's not these kind of heads for these cameras and these kind of heads for these cameras." So everything will just one operational system.
So this happened because of the...
Um, no.
Or this was an issue before?
Well, they, they told us the camera system initially would run about five years, six years, what they, when they bought, when they initially designed the building. And the tech said they, they lived up to what they, what they were initially purchased for.
Wow, that's it.
So obviously, when you're building, so obviously, when they were building the building, I wasn't a part of, I don't have that kind of information, but he said that the design for those operating as often as they do and 24/7, 365 days a year, is like, the quality cameras they had put in will last about that. So with upgrading this and maintaining the software every year, we'll hopefully eliminate any bugs down the road.
So you have, they're inoperable now?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how long, assuming it's going to get approved, how long before we have it up and running again?
As soon as it gets approved, I'll call the company and I'll, I'll get you a start date of when they can start the project.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, we have, and the officers use their body cams, leaving their body cams on during the process to record and audio everything, right where it's posted, that's being recorded.
Okay. Mr. Hall, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Mrs. Mel? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you want to continue with your motion?
Well, actually, just a couple of points. Oh, no, no. Thank you. In regards to, I don't see anyone here from Stormwater or the Highway Department. Item 3, Main Street Stormwater Drainage Upgrades, $260,224.98. The Main Street project is a multimillion-dollar project.
Yes.
That is being done without impacting the tax rate. And for that to be accomplished, it is extremely important that Chapter 90 funds from the state come to help make this happen, and in addition to funding opera funds to help defray the cost. And I would highly recommend support of this. Otherwise, it's going to be very difficult for us to finish Main Street. The MS4 Permit Compliance Services, this is to complete an MS4 implementation, Stormwater Plan and Stormwater Regulation Review. And I must, might add that the Town of Dayton does not have an in-house engineer to do this. So it will be necessary for these funds to be used so an engineer can complete that work, outside engineer. And again, I'd ask for support for these two items. With that being said, do I need to start over, or?
No, I think really, like, I think really continuing where you left off would be fine.
We had a motion on the floor, right, spoke about $371,292 for PPE, PPE and related equipment for the Dayton Fire Department, and $23,946 for an upgrade and replacement of Dayton Police Department's camera, audio archiver, and video storage system. Item 3, Main Street Stormwater Drainage Upgrades of the total of $260,224.98, and MS4 Permit Compliance Services for a total of $43,800.
Is there a motion? You got the motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Thank you, gentlemen. You're all set. Just want to order those.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, guys. Okay, we're going to go back to the regularly scheduled appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to return to the regular order of business.
Second on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll second that.
That's okay. Well, obviously, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Kevin Smith, Parks and Recreation. How about you, sir?
Good, very much performance.
Yeah. And you brought a backdancer, so, nice. Talked about you, Jonathan.
This is for the Formation of an Elderly and Disabled Tax Fund Committee.
Yes, so I wanted to speak to you tonight about the formation of the Elderly and Disabled Tax Fund Committee. We established the Elderly and Disabled Tax Fund at our special town meeting on March 4th of 2014. It was Article 2 of that meeting. In accordance to the Mass General Law that establishes that fund, it also, the intention is to establish the committee respective to the fund, and that committee consists of the Town Treasurer, the Chair of the Board of Assessors, and then three at-large members appointed by the Board of Selectmen. We tried to do our research, but we're unaware if the committee did exist at some point and stopped, or if it hadn't been fully formed since the tax fund was established. So that's why I'm before, here before you tonight was to hopefully move forward and establish that committee. As some of you know, we've had several instances where town residents have reached out to the Treasurer Collector's Office seeking possible assistance, as well as the Assessor's Office, and also the staff at the Council on Aging. So we see a real need for this, and it's just another alternative way outside of the typical exemptions that some folks are eligible for, to, to give some extra assistance. I know currently, according to Mr. Reynolds, the Treasurer Collector, we currently have $3,821 in that fund, which can be used, but until we form the committee, we can't establish, you know, an application process, guidelines, and then receive applications. So we would like to try to move forward and start that process. I did send you all some information that we had taken from other towns.
Yeah.
I think the Town of Secconk.
Yeah.
And the Town of Harvard.
Harvard.
They're, you know, really good job putting together some guidelines. They're real close to what our town does for senior tax exemptions, like as far as age and limit, so it's, you know, good, close comparison, and something that we can at least build off of. We certainly don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
You know, when, when other towns have good processes in place. So I'd like to take a look at what they have and then kind of build off of, of that there. I think one other thing, too, is once we do establish the committee, it does give us the capabilities of promoting the fact that we have a voluntary tax fund that people can contribute to. I've been here for 12 years. For 11 years, I opened up my tax bill, saw a little card, and, you know, didn't pay much, too much attention to it, but then when you start hearing, you know, stories of people experiencing hardships, that sometimes those things just click, and that's kind of how I, myself, stumbled upon it, and then have had, you know, in-depth conversations with the Council on Aging folks, the Treasurer Collector, and then Mr. Gail, our ADA coordinator. So we've all had, you know, a desire to come before you and, and talk about this and hopefully get it going.
Great.
Mike, would, could, do you mind, could you pull up actually the Town of Secconk's website, too, for me? Because it's kind of helpful, just as an example of some of the things that they do, too, that we might want to consider as we, as we progress.
I'll, I'll, I'll be like a Vanna, like a male, a male Vanna.
I think that one would be.
So, yeah, actually, perfect. So you, one, one great thing that they do is, when you click on, and they have a Civics Plus website, so it's the same platform that we use, when you, when you just scroll over that Government tab, like you wear a mic up top, one of the first things right in the middle, Elderly Disabled Taxation Committee. So it's right there, front and center, one of the first things you see, which is nice. But if you go over to their Board of Assessors tab, too, and then scroll down a little bit, and then hit Exemptions, so I, this is just one thing I noticed kind of in my cross-referencing to find different information. Go down a little bit more, it's like, yeah, so you'll see, this is just a, you know, an additional suggestion. This is like kind of a nice one-stop shop for having any, anybody that could be eligible for an exemption or hardship, or even tax deferral programs. It's all like right there. deferral programs. It's all like right there. Um, even CPA, I think that's one thing that we can also look at um as a town, is uh making sure that our elderly and disabled uh community members are aware of CP the CPA exemptions. Because obviously, we don't want to, we can only take so much away from tax payments.
Mm-hmm.
But CPA, I mean, to to some point, should be more voluntary for people who certainly can't afford it.
Sure.
So, you know, it's just, I think Secconk sets a great example of really making sure all the options are available, so um.
Well, this is great. I I I I think it's a wonderful idea, and I'm glad you guys have picked up on it and and want to get the ball rolling. Uh, before the other two members have a chance to speak, um, this is just a, we're going to vote for the formation of the committee. Um, I think we're going to table uh appointing um people to the committee to this evening. Um, mainly, two of them are not here, which uh I I trust that you you would want them on the committee, but we would prefer that they be here, as well as um I I think forming the committee and appointing the members on the same night is something that we want to get away from, because it's such a big deal to appoint this committee. So if that's all right with you, that's what we'll take as a uh as a as a uh vote. Uh, Mr. Uh, Hall, do you have any questions?
Yes, Kevin. Few things, because I was the one who voiced some objections. Your enthusiasm, what you're trying to do is wonderful. I want to throw one idea out to you and a concern that I have out to you. You mentioned that your committee will consist of the Chairman of the Board of Assessors, the Town Treasurer, and three at-large members appointed by the Board of Selectment. Um, I'm just wondering if rather than a five-member board, if you would be entertained having seven members, including a representative of the Council on Aging and the ADA Coordinator, since this committee will be looking into not only to establish a process to dress to address those needs, but also to promote contributions to the fund. And having a member of the Council on Aging and the ADA Coordinator on board, they would be best to inform the committee and Board of Selectment that there is a real need. And I'm quite confident that they could provide the numbers to support that. The second is more of an issue of transparency.
Can I answer that one first though?
Oh, certainly.
Before you get to, I just don't want to get lost. Um, I'm I'm actually, I'm glad you spoke on um expansion of the board, because I I would be in favor of that. I think the more kind of people you can get involved, who can reach different demographics of people, the the better. Um, you know, specifically, like you said, the ADA Coordinator, it would be great to have him involved because of the disabled aspect of it too. Um, and then the actually, the two other applicants you have for appointments are your Council on Aging employees. So they um they're already town employees and that they're at a big part of why we're we've pushed forward and got to where we are, because they made us aware of issues, um without getting into any specifics. Because they hear a lot more about i- issues than than, you know, the Treasurer Collector or the Assessor's Office does. So um when I first kind of brought this idea to them, like immediately, well, how do we sign up? How do we become a part of this? So then they fall right into kind of what you're asking for.
It it is a wonderful idea, and I commend you for bringing this forward. The second is a matter of transparency. If we're going to form this committee, we should post it. Since we have an at-large members, we should let the rest of the community know before we vote to appoint. And since it is the Board of Selectment who will appoint the at-large members, as you put in your proposal, it it would be nice, and even if it was done at the next meeting, that we pu- reach out to the public and say there there will be uh uh like a regular job posting. You have up until such and such a date, we can agree upon that tonight, to submit a request and then have an interview process. It can either be by the the members that are, you know, like the Treasurer, the Board of Assessors, um, people that are by their position are already on it. Or it could be the town administrator, or they would come before the Board of Selectment to interview for it. Um, as far as how that process is developed, I mean, that's something we could talk about tonight, or you could, you know, to expedite it, it probably, if we could do that tonight, so maybe at the next meeting, so this committee can get on going. And I don't think a two-week delay is going to really.
No, I mean, yeah, because realistically, I mean, we're we're it's not like we're going to be um awarding funds right off the bat. Anyway, there's quite a process that needs to be to be done. Yeah, and I would agree. I mean, that's part of the normal process is maybe at least making people aware that there is a committee.
Right. And that's what we're doing tonight.
Right.
Just a moment, you could put that on the on the out there to the public as well.
What do you have to do legally to form this committee besides get the approval of the Selectmen?
The only thing, the only it it had it has already been done, that that vote at that that special town meeting in twenty fourteen established the committee.
So there's nothing to do with the state?
No. Um, as far as, and this is just my opinion, I mean, we might have to look into it further. There's nothing that says that you could not expand. Um, this shows the mint, this shows that, you know, it is required that the Treasurer Collector and the and the Chair of the Board of Assessors um participate, and then the three committee members. I don't see any reason why we couldn't, you know, the Board of Selectmen couldn't decide, because it is a town one committee to expand it.
Right, okay.
Um. And and this isn't so much even for myself. I don't know if the vote, the vote to establish and the vote to expand happened this evening, and then appoint the three. And I don't know if you're comfortable with that. Like I said, they are COA employees. Um, and then it's just, I I think it's difficult to have people who, and and this is no offense to the Board of Selectmen by any means, but who haven't really been ingrained in the process. I mean, I think we'd like to diversify the representation on the board, but we've also kind of been all talking about this. So it would be nice to have a say in who participates as well.
Can I go off of what you just said? Um, because that's a little bit of what I'm thinking right now. Um, so I wanted as well for um appointments to be tabled today, just because it was what I got the agenda yesterday. I see this committee. I see this committee has been formed since two thousand and fourteen. Um, I received all the information. It's great. I'm really happy that we've finally come to light and going to do something with these funds that have been sitting there. Um, but I think that before we expand it, we should at least let it form the way it should be. And then the, like you said, the members that are on there, they see that that's not working, or they would like to expand, then come to the Board of Selectmen and speak about that. Um, just because, I mean, we're going from zero to one hundred. I feel like all of a sudden, I'm like, I just learned about this, and all of a sudden, I'm going to expand it. Like, I don't know, I just don't feel comfortable with that. Um, I don't know if I'm on my own here, but that's all I have to say. I'm so I watched how this um how this was formed, how somebody reached out, and I thought it was great, because sometimes when people reach out, if you don't know what to do, it just kind of dies there. But no, um Reynolds, he kept looking, the UGA involved, the COA. So I mean, this is excellent. Um, I'm looking forward to this committee starting to do work. But I just, I think it's going too fast. I want to I want to present it to the people, have, even though these are great candidates, and I have, I couldn't ask for any better. I want other residents to have an opportunity to know that this is a thing, and then go from there, depending on what the rest of the board thinks.
No, I agree. Um, I think you should keep it to five members and uh get yourself established first before this uh expanding it, and then let's take it from there.
Yeah, and I think even, I mean, we obviously um can, you know, lean on the ADA Coordinator.
You can seek input.
Yeah, there's yeah, there's input that can be had there. So it's not like, again, it's a pressing matter to expand it, like.
Right.
So like Mello had mentioned. So, yeah, no, I'm okay with that. I think, yeah, the most important thing is let's just at least establish it, and then we can iron out the other details later on.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to vote to uh um put a motion on the floor for the formation of an elderly and disabled tax fund committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the formation of an elderly and disabled tax fund committee.
I second that, though. Do we have, it's already formed.
You might just be to acknowledge.
Well, right, we're, yes, uh, right, you did say it was formed. So uh basically, you were just giving us information tonight that brought us up to date. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And we're going to table the next uh review of of appointing anybody.
And we can have um the next, our next meeting might put this on the agenda.
Yes.
And by then, residents have had an opportunity to know it's.
Yep.
It's a it's a thing and.
So we'll close the posting when?
We uh will have it open until um until a week from uh um Thursday, the twenty, I like we will have like a post, I'll, oh, yeah, like we will have the post, uh, we will have the posting available. I like it open until until they close the business on the twenty-second.
And who will interview the candidates?
I like we, I like we will have everyone here on the twenty-eighth, the uh 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 we will have everyone here the twenty-eighth for the board interview.
Okay.
That's okay with everybody?
We won't need to resubmit, right, our?
No, 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 no.
No, and thank you for spearheading this. Thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Um, it's very appreciated.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table the appointment of members to the elderly and disabled tax fund committee until the February twenty-eighth meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
PD Cameron is in aye. Thank you. Um, we're going right into announcements.
Um, the town parking ban, no person shall park a motor vehicle between the hours of twelve midnight to six AM on any street from November first of each year to April first of the following year. Police will take notice. The town of Dayton Food Bank will be held next on February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, located at Town Hall, nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue. It's in the lower level. Um, help support the James Bray Garden. The garden was established in two thousand and twenty-one and is directly benefits the Dayton community. All produce is donated to the Dayton Lion Food Pantry and Lincoln Village. We'd love to have you join us, whether you're a seasoned gardener, enjoying being outside, or want to ensure the success of the community initiative. Um, for more information, you can email Kevin Smith at ksmith@dietons-mass.gov, or myself, Nicole Mello, and mellow@dieton-mass.gov. And and thank you, Kevin, for um getting that back on track.
Kevin, is there anything you don't do?
We need to thank the real hero.
Thank you, Mike, for that Facebook poster.
I know. I'm glad I'm being all-around jack-of-all-trades town administrator.
He didn't have anything prepared for us for your.
Mike, are you uh able to give an update or tonight, or because of your voice, you want to?
On, uh, yeah, no, like I, oh, yeah, oh, oh, yeah, like I'll try, like I'll try, because like I do have an update on the Town Hall walkway and railing project. We should uh 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 we do, uh, we do have, uh, we do have a construction mobilization date on March first. Um, so 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 like so so uh 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 uh, I'll excuse me for the railing and uh for the railing and uh uh for the railing and the stairway project. Um, uh 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 uh, I'll excuse me, we will have to, I like we will, I like we will, I like we will have to work with the Building Commission, the Fire Chief to make sure um uh 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 that we have access and egress to the main level. Um, however, um, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, uh, excuse me, however, like as we know, this whole project has has, uh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, has, oh, like has been about like a year and a half in the making, so we're excited to go now.
Right.
Um, and uh, oh, yeah, uh, 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 hopefully we'll, hopefully we'll have everything wrapped up in a few weeks. And um, uh, 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 oh, yeah, uh, yeah, uh, oh, yeah, uh, yeah, hopefully we can have everything wrapped up in a few weeks to be able to grow grass. Um, and, uh, yeah, yeah, uh, 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 yeah, uh, uh, yeah, that's all I have on there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Uh, like, and on, I like in on, I like in on, I like the F, I like it, I like it on the F, I like it on the FY twenty-five, our budget, like I did include in the packet, I like an update on our planning efforts, what we're, I like what, I like what, I like, uh, uh, what, uh, what actually we're projecting. Uh, 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 yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, uh, 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 yeah, in terms of, in terms of where our expense drivers were, I like an F, I'll, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, and FY twenty-four, and how we're planning for FY twenty-five. Um, uh, 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 based on, uh, based on, uh, uh, based on our like updated regional agreement with these like school districts, we won't actually have like a budget from them until March first. So then we'll have like a real better idea about the, uh, 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 yeah, uh, like exactly where we are. And, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, 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 yeah, and how it will be, uh, like and how it will be possible to balance. And, uh, uh, like an FY twenty-five, so, um, uh, yeah, like it's all I have on that at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you, yes.
Excuse me.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
When is the deadline for committees and departments to have their budgets into you?
Uh, yeah, um, that was uh February, like, second. So, uh, uh, that has already happened. And and we have heard like from almost everybody, I believe, at this point. So they're with, I, 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 like, actually, everything is on track. So every, uh, 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 yeah, every, uh, uh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like everything is on track. And if we, eh, I like eh, and if we haven't heard uh from everybody, if we if we haven't heard from anyone at our this point, we know why as well.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Are we black for some reason?
Uh, 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 well, like a Zoom audio like wasn't actually working for some reason, so I turned it off.
Sure, thanks.
Excuse me.
Okay, Selectmen's reports. Um, the Historical Commission was uh delayed last night because of the storm, and we're going to meet next Tuesday. And the um Waste Department is not meeting until another two weeks. So I'll have an update after that, Solid Waste Committee. So, Mrs. Mello, do you have anything?
So I believe that Agricultural Commission was able to meet, but once again, didn't have a forum. Um, so still, they're looking for members. Um, and then the COD meeting, um, I was the problem. Um, I missed um putting in the agenda because February snuck up on me. So we're meeting tomorrow. Um, and we will convene then. And then, other than that, um, I don't have anything else.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Hall?
Yes, I I have two items. Um, the first, on Monday night, the Dayton Water District had a special town meeting. Um, attendance was poor. We hear people criticize the Water District, yet when given the opportunity to come before the commissioners to address concerns that they talk about on social media, out in the highways and byways, uh, only one member showed of the community, of the Dayton Water District. member showed of the community, of the Dyton Water District. During the meeting, there was discussion about, um, two items. One, we spoke about at the last meeting, the tetrachloride letter that went out, and that is caused from, as a byproduct of chlorination of water, standing water, uh, and the old age of the pipes, and especially the Elm Street tank. So, they did vote to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace filters, uh, to see if that will help lower the number. Um, they stressed at the meeting that there is no imminent danger to the welfare and well-being of the consumers of water in the Dyton Water District, but EPA has a standard that they must reach, and they are less than 1% away from that number. Um, they are going to do two things to see if that helps to remediate the problem. One, they voted on was the money for the filters, and then in the spring, they will do a flushing. If that resolves the issue, then they've bitten the bullet. If not, they will need to come up with six hundred thousand dollars to refinish, clean the tank on Elm Street, and hopefully that will resolve the issue. Also, at the town, at the meeting, uh, they announced that work has begun in the building of a new well, right next to the old well at Cedar 1 on Cedar Street. Um, and then the third issue had to do with the meters. Um, they had approximately 400 meters that needed to be replaced or reconditioned and homes throughout the Water District, and people have been cooperating, and the number is more realistic now, and they wanted to thank those homeowners who have cooperated and opened their doors, made appointments to have repairmen come in and repair the meters, but they asked that anyone who still has a meter that needs to be repaired, that they contact the Dyton Water District to set up an appointment. Uh, the second meeting, uh, was with representatives of the Fire Building Committee, feasibility study committee, if you like. Uh, originally, H K Architect in Engineering was going to put together and review the South Station, the North Station, and a new possibility or a new fire station, but the amount of money that the town voted to spend on that was not enough for H K T to feel that they could adequately address those needs. So, the second finalist, I G B out of Providence, Rhode Island, um, met with us, David DiQuattro and John Rancine, and they were wonderful. They actually came out, we did a tour of each of the buildings, they answered our questions, they're very willing and ready to go to work at, um, the price that was voted at, at town meeting. I believe it was a hundred and fifty thousand, is that correct?
Yes.
And they're quite willing. Uh, the previous one, they did a Zoom meeting with us. As they said, I G B came out, spent a whole morning with us, they walked around the facility, oh, and then they met with us at the North Station in a conference room to discuss. I will say this, there is a great deal of work that needs to be done at South Station if there is any hopes of using that, uh, to upgrade. There are great many issues that have to be addressed there. Um, so I don't know how practical remodeling the South Station will be in regards to meeting the needs of not only the town, but also safety and well-being of the fire personnel. Based on the needs at the South Station, we are very, very fortunate to have fire personnel that are as tolerable and as willing to work with us until we can address this issue. So they are going to come back with the review, um, and then the whole feasibility study committee will then make some decisions and recommendations to come back to the Board of Selectmen, and then eventually for vote of the town. Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to, uh, review, discuss, and act the DPW Service Awards for March 1st of 2024 to February 28th, 2025.
I can speak to this if you need an explanation.
Yep.
Um, so, this is a service that Southeastern Regional Services Group provides to us, where they basically compile all the services that the member highway departments will need, and they include it in one invitation to bid. So they make a menu of all the services, and they compile it to one bid, and then they produce the results, contract, and basically supply all the procurement services for us.
Okay.
And this is their compilation and all that. And it's for one year. It's annual.
We can vote on these as presented this evening, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the award of contracts to the that is presented this evening for the length of service of March 1st, 2024, to February 28th, 2025.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is in aye. Thank you. Um, we're going to table item, uh, C. Uh, so is there a motion to table?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table item C under new business.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is in aye. Review, discuss, and act annual F P 2 license renewals.
So, this is, um, all of our underground storage. Well, it's not all of them, we're missing one still, which will be presented at, hopefully, the next meeting, but it's all the underground storage permits up for renewal. Um, inspections have been performed by Fire Captain Eric Gagnon, and they have met all the requirements for the permits.
All three have?
All three, yep.
Okay.
No outstanding allegations to the town.
Right. This is a holdover from a couple of weeks ago, correct?
Yes.
Uh, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the annual F P 2 license renewals of value gas, 1866 County Street, Dyton, Taunton Yacht Club, 2125 Water Street, Dyton, H K T L L C, 1995 Winter of Street, Dyton.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Karen is in aye. Uh, approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Town of Dyton pay the warrant of February 1st, 2024. Item 32A dash 24, one hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars and seventy-one cents. Item 32B dash 24, six hundred twenty-six thousand two hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Item 32C dash 24, two thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and forty-four cents.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Karen is in aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Town of Dyton pay the warrant of February 8th, 2024. Item 33A dash 24, one hundred fourteen thousand five hundred two dollars and eighty-five cents. Item 33B dash 24, one hundred three thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars thirty-four cents. Item 33C dash 24, three million two hundred thirty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Karen is in aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Town of Dyton pay the warrant of February 15th, 2024. Item 34A dash 24, one hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and fifteen cents. Item 34B dash 24, three hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred and four dollars and eighty-two cents.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Karen is in aye. We're going to move on to public input. Is there any this evening? Jonathan? Yes, sir.
Can I stay here?
Sure.
What I wanted to discuss very briefly under public input, um, well, saying it's Jonathan Day, like, you're not in the circle in Dyton, I'm putting on my, uh, hat as a resident, but also as the ADA coordinator, just to bring to the members' attention of the Board of Selectmen, as you're looking at the fiscal year now, and as you're looking at all the budgets, and I'm not suggesting where this should be or not, but the town has a responsibility, if there's a request for CART or ASL, American Sign Language Services, for any public meeting, or especially for town meetings, or a special town meeting, to be able to provide those services. And the reason I'm bringing this to everyone's attention is, although we haven't formally had requests as of yet, it's more likely that we're going to start getting requests. Unfortunately, the types of artificial intelligence that are available through other methodologies, for example, Zoom, are not accepted by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as an alternative to CART or ASL services. Um, so, I think when the budgets are being prepared, whether it came through the ADA Coordinator's budget, or the Board of Selectmen's budget, or the Town Administrator's budget, I think it's imperative on the town to think in advance, because if there's one request, or two, or three during the year, it's not, the town is not going to be able to say, we don't have the money, it wasn't budgeted, it is a requirement. And my concern is that if we don't, if we don't assign the dollars somewhere, then in the end, somebody's going to try and say, we don't have the money, and again, we have to, it's not, there's no choice here. So, in a large city, Boston, Springfield, even Taunton, they can budget for these things, and, you know, we, we can get figures to see how much they spend, but that's irrelevant. In smaller towns like ours, it's not budgeted. What I would suggest is the aggregate cost, if there's an ASL and sign language interpreter at the same meeting, then that total can run up to twelve hundred dollars. If it's one, it can run six. If it's, you have to pay them in two-hour increments, for example, no matter what, and that includes equipment, et cetera. So, I'm simply bringing it to the Board's attention so that when the Board and the town administration have discussions about various budgets, select, with the F I C O, you can consider this. I would recommend setting aside minimally twelve hundred dollars, potentially twenty-four hundred dollars for two requests. Naturally, if the money isn't used, it can be rolled over to the next year, but the point of this conversation is for me to bring it to your attention so that at least it can be available. Especially if, with, keep in mind, when we have meetings such as county meetings, and we're discussing warrant information and warrant articles, and this could be for some of the other situations as well, the interpreters have to be precise. Every word has to be interpreted correctly, and sometimes that even involves a legal interpreter, because there are special fields for different types of interpreters. So, I think I, I don't want to take this any further and go too nauseam about it. I think what I'm trying to say is very clear, but I think the town needs to be able to plan for the future in this, because we could get this request for town meeting, if we get a request or another meeting. If we get a request and we don't use the funds, you know, because the person has canceled, that's great. Unfortunately, if the person makes a request and they don't show up and they don't cancel within 24 hours, we're still on the hook, and there's no way around that, but we have a responsibility to have the funds set aside just in the event. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Anybody else want to be heard, sir? You're all set?
I, I...
Yep, I know you were, uh, the talk.
Good evening. I want to thank the residents of Dyton for allowing me the honored privilege of serving on the Board of Selectmen for the past three years. Special thanks to Town Administrator Mike Mullin, and Karen Brady, and Leanne Kerwin in the Board of Selectmen Office for all of their support and help over the past three years, and to the employees of the Town of Dyton who work diligently for the people of this town. Your efforts should be commended and certainly not taken for granted. This evening, I would like to announce that I will not be seeking reelection to the Board of Selectmen. I would like to thank Chairman Peter Karen and Selectwoman Nicole Mello for their support and camaraderie over the past two years. In closing, I would like to wish Selectmen candidate Mark Pichico the best in his quest to serve on the Board. He is doing a fine job as the registrar of voters in Taunton, and did a fine job previously as Dyton's Town Clerk. I am confident that he will serve the people of Dyton with the same diligence as he did as Town Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny. That's a tough speech to make. Okay, uh, minutes approval of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes for January 24th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of January 24th, 2024.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is in aye. Adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Peter Karen is in aye. Thank you.